Good evening. Call the meeting to order of Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role of the council?
Councilman Fogarty.
Yeah.
Councilman Lawson.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rego.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Souza. Council President Rodrick.
Here, the record show four members are present. Please rise for the pledge. Welcome, everyone. Madam Clerk, if you would bear with me, we're going to move around the agenda a little bit to make things go smoothly. Soon is Council VP who's picking up some paperwork. As soon as he comes, we're going to move to page eight on the docket, the resolutions. Before that, I also want to thank everyone for their office. I've received of sympathy, especially my colleagues here, VP for stepping in and making care of ceremonial duties. Thank you all.
You're welcome, Bob. So sorry for your loss.
With that, Madam Clerk, we'll start with the Resolutions Letter D on page eight. If you could read the heading of that first one.
Number one, resolution requesting to name the basketball court at Kent Heights Park the Vincent Vinny Spimuli Memorial Basketball Court, introduced by Councilman Fogarty.
Councilman Fogarty, would you like to introduce your idea?
Yes, do you have the resolution to be read?
If you want to read the resolution, while we're getting that ready to read, I just want to say that this is something that this council, I'm sure, never say never, we haven't voted yet, but I'm sure will embrace unanimously. I don't think there is a person here who has not worked with Vinny Spimuli through the years. If you were a youth involved in athletics, name the sport, basketball, baseball, football, soccer, whatever, or just being a mentor, Vinny was the guy many of us know. Being a little older, I go back with Vinny when we would meet and discuss world events on Friday evenings. We were slightly out of high school and playing cards and chief, not for money. We were just playing for fun and especially baseball, such a baseball guy he was and basketball, and he sent many a little kid onto high school and college and even beyond. But Councilman, do you want to read the resolution?
I would love to.
Then anyone else can make comment.
Yes, I would love to. Thank you very much. Whereas Vincent Vinny Spimuli was a 1964 graduate of East Providence High School and a 1968 graduate of Providence College. And whereas Mr. Spimuli was a special education teacher for 35 years. Whereas Mr. Spimuli coached middle school and high school basketball and was a longtime coach and director of the East Providence Central Little League and St. Martha CYO Basketball and was known as Coach Vin, two decades of student athletes. And whereas for many years, Mr. Spimuli was also the assistant director at Camp Ruggles, a camp for children with emotional and behavioral disabilities. Although his teams won many championships, his strength was in teaching young people to be competitive and to do their best while building their character at the same time. And whereas Mr. Spimuli was a legendary youth coach, mentor, volunteer, and extraordinary family member, he and his wife Peggy were the proud parents of two children and three grandchildren. His son Michael is the detective couple with the East Providence Police Department and his daughter Sandra Ferrand is the East Providence Superintendent of Schools. I'll therefore be it resolved that the City Council of East Providence hereby names the basketball court at Kent Heights Park as Vincent Vinny Spimuli Memorial Basketball Court.
Second that motion.
We'll take that as a motion by Councilman Fogarty, seconded by Council Vice President Rego. Before we vote on that, I would add that even though there are some relatives in the school apartment, including a superintendent of schools, Vincent, those 32 years teaching were done at Ponte Gansett High School, so there's no favoritism here. We're not honoring an East Providence teacher. Vinny, we lost Vinny too young. Other council members want to comment before we vote?
And then I just wanted to announce that, you know, I want to add that I've known Vinny in the family for over 40 years, well-respected and always said it like it is. You know, I miss him. So we are having a small gathering on September 6th from 12 to 2 at Vinny Spimuli Vincent Basketball Courts, Kent Heights Park. Rain date is September 7th, that's Sunday, 12 to 2. Small reception at the courts. I know Vinny was loved and respected by lots of people, which is why Mr. Russo, Mr. Candy, myself, we met for breakfast to discuss the first annual Vincent Spimuli Basketball Tournament, but the park was a little delayed, the timing wasn't right, so we're going to kick this in gear next year to be determined. It's going to happen next season, so looking forward to that. I'm sure we'll have a lot of sponsors and excitement, and thank you. Thank you all for sponsoring this with me.
And we want to welcome and add that Vinny's wife Peggy is here, and as you mentioned, his daughter Sandy, his son Mike, his son-in-law are here with us tonight. We appreciate you coming. We have the motion and the second. Madam Clerk, for the record, would you please call the role of the council?
Councilman Fogarty.
Aye.
Councilman Lawson.
Absolutely.
Council Vice President Rego.
Aye.
Council President Rodrick.
Aye, it's official. Sandy or Mike, did you want to say anything? Sure.
I will say, being a Riverside kid, I didn't interact with Vin that much, but I got to know him through the Jim Russo's campaign, and what an amazing guy and what a legacy of commitment to the youth of this city through sports, and it's, I can't think of a better honor. We got so many great people like him, and it's an honor to honor your dad. Sandy, Mike, you guys know how I feel about your dad and your families, and I'm very happy for you.
So I can't, you know, echo that even louder, louder. So thank you to the Public Works Department. They work very hard to create some signers that's going to go up on the fencing at the new park, Kent Heights, so Vinny's Basketball Court. And Dan Borges and the staff went out of their way hurriedly, actually, made us six copies of this, a smaller version of what's going to go on the fence. So this is for the six people in the family, you three and the three grandkids. All right, so I know it's special. We're going to get a photo of us. Podium's all yours. You've had enough podium experience. And thanks to mayor and everybody involved.
I really didn't have anything prepared, so I'll kind of keep it short and sweet. I think it's a tremendous tribute, and I'd like to thank the council from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of my family. It means a lot. It means a lot. And he touched a lot of people's lives from kids older than me to younger than me to 20 years after. And I've had people come down here, friends of mine who live in New York and out of state, and when they would come down to visit, they would always say, we got to go see Vin. How's Vin doing? And it was just the memories of it, and it was not just basketball and baseball. It was, we used to come and eat lunch at the house because we lived in Kent Farm and our family didn't have any money. So he would, the house was always open to everybody. So it was much more than just coaching kids. It was mentoring them. And another thing was at Ponte Gansett, a lot of young coaches got their start with him, and people that are still coaching throughout the state were all under that little coaching tree that he started up there, and some of which are from East Providence. So on behalf of my family and everybody that he's touched, I can't thank you enough for this tribute, and it really means a lot to all of us.
Thank you, Mike. Dr. Ferrand, this is not a promise of more budget money for the school department. This is strictly personal, not business. In a few weeks, you can come back, but you're welcome if you want to comment anything, or Peggy, or...
We're just very grateful.
Thank you so much, Frank.
You're welcome, of course.
You know, I talk to Vinny every day, of course, I get no answer.
You will.
I get the answer, I will.
Yeah. Mike, take that one, and then there's five more on the table for the family to sign.
We are truly grateful.
Oh, my pleasure. Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out. Madam Clerk, the next resolution after that?
Number two, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension with MTG Disposal LLC for refuse recycling collection, introduced by Council Vice President Rego.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. President. This is obviously an important aspect in the city, and with the work of Department Director Dan Borges, we've been able to put together a good piece of contracts for the city for the next couple of years. As you know, all costs rise, but Dan did a good job in negotiating this. This takes effect on the first of September of this year, going through the year 2028. Dan can add some of the specifics to it at this time?
Good evening. I'm just going to hand out a few memos that I kind of put together just to give the council a sense of the process that we went through to get this renegotiated. So just to give a very short version of what was a long process, what, the city started renegotiating in the end of January, excuse me, the, if you look at the last page of that memo, it sort of breaks down the original proposed amount that MEGA had originally brought to the city, which would have provided us with an 8% increase in the first year. After several months in renegotiating, we were able to get MEGA down to a 4.5% increase in the first year. The one benefit to that is that this will allow us to level fund the rubbish and recycling contract. So in a few weeks, when we have budget meetings, you'll see that there was no increase to this year's budget, which, you know, is certainly important. So over the three separate, you know, negotiating proposals that they provided, the city was able to save roughly $209,412 over three years from the original contract. And that puts the city, just to, into perspective, it puts household costs per resident household at $145.77. I put a breakdown of several other municipalities in the state, and we are well in range, if not below, several of the other major municipalities. So I think there's significant benefit to this contract. MEGA's also adding some additional on-vehicle technology that will allow us to monitor when contaminated materials are placed in recycling bins and put into the trucks. So then we have the ability to understand whether we want to take that to the landfill rather than receiving a penalty at the, at the MER, the recycling facility. We've also been able to have MEGA essentially take over all of the calls, missed calls handling, so a lot of the calls will be rerouted to MEGA. They will handle them directly, be able to dispatch drivers rather than DPW taking the phone call, reporting it to supervisor out in the field, and then it being reported to a driver to go pick up. So we feel that'll be extremely important to sort of streamlining the process of missed calls. Should go to mention, though, that our office is still there. So if there are issues, residents still have the ability to call us, but we will, we will put a process in place when they call the office to have those calls directly rerouted to MEGA. Other than that, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. You can see years one, two, and three. The breakdown in increases is 4.5% in the first year, 6% in the second year, and roughly 5% in the third year.
Again, I commend you, knowing the economic situations that we all face in businesses and the environment that we're living in these days, these, not knowing what the cost of fuel could be. Obviously, MEGA is, you know, has to pay their employees equipment. This was a well-put-out and well-put-together contract by you and everybody else involved. And the nice thing about this is that this was done for three years, so obviously it takes us to the end of our term, and who's ever fortunate to be sitting here at the next term doesn't have to deal with this for like two, for two years. So the budget process was also worked in, and I commend again for getting this done at three, in this environment, to get any private sector company to negotiate a three-year term is very important. So I move passage at this time.
Second. Thanks, Dan.
Motion by VP Rego, passage, second by Councilman Fogarty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, 4 to 0. Thank you. Next item?
Resolution number three, resolution adopting flag protocols at East Providence City Hall, introduced by Councilman Lawson.
Councilman. This is a response to something that bothers me and many other people told me. We got three flag poles out front, and we don't put the American flag front and center above everything else. And so this just kind of adopts a little bit from the United States Flag Code that talks about the proper way of displaying flags. So what this resolution would do would say that the three flag poles out front, the center one will be for the American flag. And in this day and age of division in this country, we need that rallying symbol, and I can't think of anything more rallying than the American flag. So that will be front and center above anything else. And then this also will say to the right of the flag will be the State of Rhode Island flag. And then those poles on the left and the right should be lowered about 18 to 24 inches to ensure the American flag is on top. To the right will be the State of Rhode Island flag, and then the third pole, we can fly the City of East Providence, but that could be our ceremonial pole as well. We have great ceremonies celebrating various cultural and, you know, holiday-type things. That's going to remain. This in no way diminishes that. This only puts that American flag front and center above everything else.
Thank you. No, I think your point is well-taken, that we have flags from many different cultures at times that we, we honor with ceremonies, and that's a good thing, and that will continue. Director, did you want to comment?
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. Councilman Lawson, I apologize, I haven't, I've been away and on vacation, haven't been able to bring this to your attention. So the only time that we wouldn't do that is, because we've had to do research on this over the years, is if there's a time when the American flag is also flying with another country flag, so as you can see, we have the Ukrainian flag per the flag etiquette, and we researched it with law as well, what we always do is if the American flag is also flying and we are not in a time of war with another country flag, they are to be flying equally at that point. So that's the only time you will see is if there are any country flags, like when we do the, you know, Irlanday, the Irish flag, the Brazilian flag, anytime it's another country flag, they are to fly equal to the American flag during a time of peace. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, so if you drive by.
I understand that.
Because people have brought it to our attention, and we go by like the actual...
Right. Why are we still flying the Ukrainian flag?
Because when, when that started to, when that happened and we all came here, we said that we would, in support of all the Ukrainian residents who came forth, we said we would fly it during this entire time until it was a time of peace with that, that country.
But I always support that, but the American flag should be front and center above all of it.
Well, it is to the, again, going by the code, if we're not in time of, if we're at peace with that country, they are to flag, fly it, you know, at the same level. That's why we do it.
I make motion to approve this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Rego. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item?
Number four, resolution authorizing the award of contracts for the East Providence Community Center by Bentley Companies LLC, consistent with the guaranteed maximum price, introduced by President Rodrick, Council President Rodrick.
Make a motion to approve. This is just the next step along the way of funding the new rec center. Exciting. So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Fogarty, and discussion. And the key here, too, is that guaranteed maximum price, so this is good. That is not going to increase. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you for being here, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Thirty bucks, Dan.
Are we, no, I'm sorry. We will go to page seven, number five. And if you want to read that ordinance heading, Madam Clerk, at least in my agenda, it's page seven, number five.
Ordinance of the Council of the East, of the City of East Providence Appropriations 275,000 for unanticipated costs associated with the building renovations improvements to the police station. Summary, the purpose of this ordinance is to allocate $275,000 for unanticipated costs associated with building renovations improvements to the police station from Capitol, City Capitol, introduced by Council President Rodrick.
So it is a public hearing, and Chief, if you want to give us the summary on this, it's basically a transfer of some funding?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's just some overages that we encountered throughout the last year of renovations over at the police station.
And it's going well to date?
It's going very well. And publicly, I do want to thank the men and women of the East Providence Police Department for sticking through a extremely difficult work situation. We know we're moving offices and moving down hallways. People are uncomfortable for the last year, even as of today, jackhammering block and hammering and all sorts of construction noise. The men and women, sworn and uns sworn members, have really, you know, been amazing during the whole process. So where we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, we're probably about 90% done, so.
I was just going to use that term. Is there light at the end of the tunnel?
Yeah, the light's dim right now. We've been, you know, we were hoping we were going to be done by this time, but, you know, things happen, and there's delays in a lot of delivery of products and things like that, so.
Sure. Other council members, comments?
I agree 1,000%. Yeah, the women and men of the EPPD are great. We're glad that we were able to appropriate this up, funding to get this done. And, you know, I guess we're in a contract negotiation, so we look forward to signing, making sure you guys are compensated decent pay raises every year, and make sure we're paying enough to keep the best and brightest here in EP. So we're looking forward to signing that contract, making sure you guys are fully compensated that we need, so.
Thank you. Councilman Fogarty?
Yeah, I was over there touring, and the work is coming along good. I mean, it looks nice for what they're doing, and I can see why you need more, so keep looking forward.
Thank you. No, and I invite everybody, anybody from the council at any time, if they want to come over and, and take a look at the building and then the progress that we have made. I mean, it's still a little dusty in areas, but we can definitely show you some of the big steps that we've taken.
Well, it looked great at the Policeman's Memorial, which seemed like it was just yesterday, but it was back in May, so how time has flown this year is incredible. So I look forward to knocking on the door and going over there in the next week or so and, you know, getting a tour and seeing the update. And I just want to say thank you for obviously stepping up in your new leadership role as well as the deputy. I'm confused as how I got to address everybody as I, you know, as, you know, as I address Andy as well. You gentlemen have really stepped up, and I see, you know, I see a lot of good enthusiasm, and I want to commend you and your whole command staff for what you did on August, you know, two weeks ago, on August 5th, that, that the night out was an exceptional event. You should be very proud of yourself and your staff. It grows each year, and the community is, appreciates it, and as, and hopefully we can keep on maintaining and gaining the police numbers that you need to keep this being one of the top police forces. But thank you for everything you've done since you've stepped into your, into the role of number one. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone have a question for the chief or the council? Ask one more time by procedure. Anyone have any questions or comments about this? Hearing none or close the public hearing? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Council Vice President Rego. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, 4 to 0. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Chief. Madam Clerk, we revert back to the General Order of Business. You need a second to get that organized.
Executive session, the City Council of East Providence may meet in executive session pursuant to RIGL 42-46-582.
Thank you. For this matter, we will hold the session right here in public, and Solicitor Marcello, if you want to explain.
As you know, the City of East Providence, prior to me arriving, had previously joined the national litigation, the opioid litigation, which is a multi-district litigation pending in the federal courts. From time to time, there are settlements that the city has asked to approve. We just got notification of the Purdue Direct Settlement, and simply asking for the authority of the, of the council to execute any and all documents. of the, of the council to execute any and all documents necessary for that settlement. I would ask if it's appropriate, sometimes these settlements, as you know, with the backup that I gave you, have, have quick deadlines that we have to take action on. So if it's up to the council, sometimes this, this happened to be okay because we had a council meeting before the September thirtieth date. But to the extent that I, we cannot get a council meeting to formally approve it, I would also ask for a general authority to approve any and all settlement allowance that that come through, that we might not be able to make the council docket.
Sure. I think that's a good idea. We're talking about monies and settlements that coming to us, anything that involves payment out, we would have to have council vote. But in these cases, we, we don't. So in terms of the item before us and going forward, is there a motion?
I just have one question.
Yes.
Solicitor, do you have any, do you have any idea as to what we could be looking for for settlement wise? I mean, do you think it's firmed up?
So it depends upon, it's by a formula. I can't tell you what this settlement will produce to the city. I do have access to a portal from, that has been set up by the national litigation to date from, from all the settlements that we have, have entered into and for which we receive money. The total amount that the city has received or is scheduled to receive is, I'm going to round up, but it's four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. There are strict limits on how that money can be used for the settlement agreement. It's only has to be for opioid issues, addiction issues, mental health issues. They're very strict guidelines of where that money can be spent. It can't be put into the general fund, for instance, but it has to be targeted for different opioid, educational issues, those kind of issues. But so the short answer to your question is I can't tell you how much we'd get for this settlement, but the, but the total so far has been just under a half a million dollars.
So with that said, it can only be used for that, so it can't be used for any personnel that might assist in the program. It can only be used for the specific programs.
It, 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 there are, there's a different tranche of money out there that, there's the state money that flows through us with the state, and then there's money that flows through us directly to the, to the town, excuse, to the city. Depending upon what the person can do or does not do, it can be used for salaries to support the opioid program, whatever that program may be.
Can it go to the schools for youth prevention, drug awareness, stuff like that?
It may. I don't want to say yes or no. There are, there are guidelines there. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can get you those guidelines for this. Each, 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 and I know the, the Chief of Staff is a member of the statewide coalition that monitors the state fund, so she might have a better answer. But I will get you the guidelines for the, this tranche of money.
Thank you.
Good evening again. So I, Solicitor Marcello is correct, so I currently sit on the OSAC board, so we do meet and our sole purpose in our assignment is to discuss how the finance, how the funding will be used and where it's allocated. And it does run the gamut in terms of how municipalities are using it. There's prevention, there's education, there's outreach, but it's very specific and all very, very public. Every meeting is on Zoom and the governor's task force also has their meetings. All the documents are on the page, so I'm happy to get the council any of those documents and give you the breakdown of exactly where those funds are being spent and, and what they're allocated for, including outreach. It comes, goes to everything, including those who may be expecting and have, you know, been drug users at one point and, you know, how that will impact their baby and transition and jobs. So it really, it runs the gamut in terms of programs. But I can, I'm happy to send that to all of you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
To allow Mike.
Yes.
Yes. Make a motion that Mike's allowed to negotiate on a, yeah.
Accept the, accept the.
Accept, yep. I apologize.
Motion seconded by Council Vice President Rego. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item.
Consent calendar for discussion and possible vote. A, council journals, regular meetings, minute seven fifteen twenty twenty-five. Tax abatements, cancellations and abatements, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Letters. Two dash six rounds avenue, East Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine one five, map five one two, block eleven, parcel zero zero three eight point zero.
Any question on the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve, accept.
Accept.
Motion by Councilman Lawson to accept. Councilman Fogarty seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item.
Licenses for discussion and possible vote. Motion to bundle non-public hearing licenses.
Motion to bundle?
Second.
Motion to bundle, Councilman Lawson, seconded, Councilman Fogarty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the non-public hearing licenses?
C.
C one through eleven.
Make a motion to approve C one through, C eleven.
Second.
Motion, Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Fogarty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the public hearing.
There's also a non-public hearing that we separated. It was C number one. It was for a special event, one day alcohol license. It wasn't in the C through eleven.
So this is the, this Rhode Island Folk Festival. So that's what this is in regards to.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll second the motion to.
Motion, Councilman Fogarty, seconded by Councilman Lawson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item. We have the sheet here.
Andy, I went and got it. That's, I, well, he didn't pass it down.
Well, it's blank anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So no one on the sign up.
Communication, none. Public comment, none. Council members. Number one, breakdown by banking account, the amount balanced in each account as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Council Vice President Rego.
Okay, thank, thank you. I just received this from the Chief of Staff about an hour and a half ago. I will pass this along to all of you. I think this is good information that we have. As you know, the clock will be starting pretty soon on those favorite words, budget time. So I thought this was a piece of information that we need, a lot of the pieces of the puzzle as we hear and hear in the news, we hear from the state, federal about budgets being tightening, tightening up, excuse me, as well as potentially the state of Rhode Island might not be receiving as much money from the federal government. I'm not going to get into the minutia of everything that's going on in Washington, but obviously everything, you know, goes downhill and we're at the end and we can't print money. We're not supposed to print money. And I will pass this along. I thank the Chief of Staff for the information. I think it's very important in this fiscal year with no more opera funds and grants obviously being, going to be, continued to be dried up from the federal government, that all the information we have, the better decisions that we can make together with the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All said. Next.
Update on inspections of all nursing facilities, assisted living, high-rise living, boarding houses, hotels and motels by both the fire and building departments. Council Vice President Rego.
Again, I received this from the Chief of Staff, so I want to say thank you. I know she's just coming back from vacation. The one thing, and I just am pulling it up right now, and maybe sometimes my laptop in the, you know, has so many firewalls in it that the only thing that I see, and I might be wrong, and I'm trying to do it right now, is the only thing that was provided to me, to, to you, and you provided it to me from the fire chief, was the two hotels or motels in, in the city. I don't, this came to my mind because of the tragedy that happened in Fall River and brings back bad memories of the station fire, that the city is always questioned about inspections, both building and fire. And God, I never want to see a fire, what happened in Fall River and the station fire happened in the jurisdiction of the city of East Providence. So to make sure that we're up to speed, I asked for it. And again, if he could get us, you know, it's not just, you know, extended stay in Rumford Motor and I'd really like to know about the assisted living and nursing homes. I represent four of the five high-rises in the city of East Providence and I want the people at Rumford Tower is Pock's, you know, Pockway Tower is.
Above you.
Well, I said I represent four out of the five, so I, you know, I want them all, I want those residents to be secure and then nursing home assisted living, as, you know, we saw could become an issue. So if they could get back and get that information to us as the council, because we obviously hold the fiduciary responsibilities for the city. And I don't want this city to ever be into a situation where we could be facing a lawsuit for neglect, which I don't think will happen because of the fine men and women that work in the fire department as well in the building office. Thank you.
Council Vice President, oh, Council President, I'm sorry, through the Council of President. We, that is just the partial response, as we mentioned, and thank you for your patience on allowing us to gather all this information. More information will be forthcoming and we'll provide that to you in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Council Vice President. Certainly an important matter. Next item.
Traffic patterns and issues on Anthony Street. Council President Rodericks.
So for the administration and Chief, if you could maybe start a process where, whereby we can either talk with the police department and, and others, traffic divisions. Through the years, I think we all have had complaints about some of the narrow streets across from City Hall here, Anthony, Vine, James, with people parking on at least one side, sometimes both sides. People just can't get through, emergency vehicles have difficulty. We recently heard from a family on Anthony Street. So the Anthony Street right now is the focus and I, I think that when those large homes were built, the forties, fifties, and, you know, a little bit beyond, most people had one car. I know I grew up in a family who had one car. Today, families can have three or four. And so there's a lot of vehicles on Anthony Street and people have problems sometimes even backing out of their driveways because you kind of have to drive in to the driveways, they're narrow. So maybe not a formal traffic study, but some kind of a, an observation in the near future. I know a couple of us have talked about what some cities do when you have a lot of parallel streets like that. Some are one way, the other way coming back, one way going down, might take some getting used to, and that may not even work, but it might be something to, to be considered for those streets across from City Hall here, Anthony, Vine, James, Walnut. So nothing we can do about it tonight, but if we could, maybe even if there was a neighborhood meeting at some point, see what people think. But I do know trash trucks, fire trucks and just plain motorists have difficulty negotiating at least Anthony Street. So we'll, we'll be in touch, I'm sure. Thank you. Next item.
Number four, request for items to be included in the capital budget. Councilman Lawson.
Well, I'm putting this out there now on behalf of the folks down in Riverside, down south. Vinorav Playground, there is overwhelming request to add playground equipment for pre-teens. The park are refreshed, but they put in like toddler things. I brought the Council President by to see what I was talking about. All the other playgrounds have the, you can climb, slide, go across. So I'd like to put in a request that this capital budget have money to add that piece of equipment for the folks down in Vinorav in the gully. And the second is for some compost toilets on the water side of Crescent Park. It is probably the number one thing people say, how do we have this beautiful park with no bathrooms? So I'm getting ahead of it now and I'd like to have it put in the budget. These bathrooms, why they stayed locked, I got the answer. People don't really accept that answer, but I'd like to put in the request for some compost toilets on the water side, specifically down in the lower part and then up by the parking lot area. So those are my only two requests that they be, and I'm only saying it now, I know we're going to go through the process, but.
I'm sure with the capital budget, when we go through that, you know, there is room to, to add, and especially the compost bathrooms are very popular now statewide. We have several in East Providence, we put one at the high school. Again, it's not nineteen sixty, it's two thousand twenty-five. You need safe, clean public restrooms when we have thousands of people going to these facilities. The new Kent Park, Kent Heights Park, where they have, have them there and even today, I drove by there actually, my four-year-old grandson, he came by to tell me that he was, he calls it my park because he knows I grew up there. And he said, I went by grandpa's playground today and there were a lot of people. And so I rode by and sure enough, maybe a hundred people or so enjoying that great new park and the bathrooms. So they're doable. We, we can address that, I'm sure, with the capital, capital projects. And if you haven't been to Kent Park yet, you need to go there. As I said at the opening of the park, the ribbon cutting where the kids cut the ribbon, I don't know of a park in Rhode Island that's as nice, as spacious and, and does what, what Kent Park does for the, not only the neighborhood, but the whole city. So yeah, I will work on that, definitely. Next item.
We already discussed the flag stuff.
Okay.
So I just got my statement on Oldham.
Yes, number six.
So just, just the statement is, I don't know why the city's putting this out as a housing thing. Unless they got three votes on this council, we already said we're not going to sell any of that property. I'm against housing. I said I'd have an open mind, then got blindsided. That's in the past, but going forward, I want to be very clear, I will not be voting to sell a piece of that property to a developer to put housing up. There are plenty of appropriate places in Riverside to add housing. I'm not against the housing. I drove around with Council President and we, I showed him different areas, but when it comes to Oldham, the plan was community center slash business incubator. That's all I'm voting to move forward on. We can do it. We had the upper money to get the building rehabbed. We dragged our feet. So during this budget, I am going to see where we're at with that building as far as we put the roof on. We still need some roof doors, windows and interior renovation, so I will be advocating that some money go towards, it is a public building, that the city of East Providence owns, so it is appropriate that we maintain it. But as far as adding housing, no, no, no. So I just want to put that out there to the public and this is based on the numerous people that reached out, people terrified, saying, why are they putting apartment buildings right on top of my property? And it's just not an appropriate place for that. There are plenty of places that we could look to build housing. It's not that we're against housing, but not on that piece of property. And that's it. I just wanted to get that out there to the public and before developers start coming in and saying that, it's, again, unless there's three votes that I'm not aware of, housing's not going to happen there. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next item.
Discuss of. Discuss of fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget hearing schedule, Council President Rodrickx.
I think that your office and the solicitor are working on a budget schedule. I think when, when it comes up, we can.
This is where it should be discussed.
Okay.
Sorry. So at the Council, Council President's request, we came up with a preliminary budget calendar, and we're asking you for some input and hopefully to adopt at least a general calendar tonight so we can discuss, the clerk can start scheduling and posting the appropriate meetings. Under the charter, the mayor has until September 16th, 2025, to submit the budget. I'm told this can all be adjusted if he submits it earlier, but the deadline, the absolute deadline is November 16th, 2025.
September 16th.
What did I say?
You said November.
I'm sorry. I'm dreaming, I'm dreaming.
Wishful thinking.
I'm sorry. September. That happens to be a regular council meeting. Under the charter, at that date, the council can, in my opinion, should set a date for a public hearing on that budget. Now, the public hearing on that budget is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the mayor's proposal. So assuming that, well, again, assuming that it's submitted on September 16th, we will be able to advertise the public hearing for September 24th. I think it's seven or 10 days that it has to be advertised before the public hearing. So that's, on September 24th would be the date of that public hearing. Now I submitted, so as of that date, you could have a public hearing. That's the first date that's available to comply with the charter, to have a public hearing, to allow the public to comment. Nothing prevents the council before that date from beginning its workshops to have department heads come in and discuss their appropriate budgets. So we, we tentatively scheduled, and against to your approval, a hearing on September 18th, 2024, which is two days after its submission, if the council wants to begin bringing in department heads or whatever to review their budget requests. So that would be the first date. On November, excuse me, September 24th, 2025, is the public hearing on the budget. Again, that's an opportunity for the public to comment on the mayor's budget. After that date, or on that date, once that's, public hearing is concluded, you could again have additional workshops on the budget to have more department heads come in. And then any date between 9:24 and 9:30, we set another one. The appropriate, the date that's important of September 24th is because once that date occurs and the public hearing is over, the council has a right and legally can add to the budget or make changes to the budget after that public hearing date. So again, we're setting, we're proposing November 24th as a public hearing, excuse me, November 30th as a public hearing for a workshop. And then on Tuesday, again, another date on 10/7/25 for another regular meeting workshop, another workshop on 10/14/2025. And that's the last day that the council can increase any budget items, because if they do increase a budget item, we would have to then advertise it. And so those advertisements has to be in by 10/16 for a council required public hearing on their changes on 10/21. So, and then once that public hearing is held, and the council changes to the budget, and it's only if they add to the budget, then we would have a final hearing on 10/23/25, and then the, excuse me, 10/23/25 for the final hearing. And then the last day that you can actually adopt to approve the budget would be 10/25. So we have built in five workshops. You can have more if you want, you have less if you want, but we have built in five workshops between 9:16 and 9:25. So that's the kind of the outline. If you want more, we can certainly add more. You can, they can be added within 48 hours notice, but that's the general. So we thought five was enough. If you think more is required, that's up to you. Obviously, the school department will be a big budget item, and we don't have their budget yet, but you'll have to, I think, obviously, it has to be submitted before 9:16, so that'll be part of the mayor's budget. And then you can have the school department in anytime that you want. So that's, that's the outline to meet all the advertisement requirements and the public hearing requirements. That's the general outline that we have set up.
Thank you. I think this is a healthy outline with advertising deadlines that, you know, if we get dangerously close to missing, can cause a problem. As you know, what you said as a reminder, members would, it's nice if we could all be at all of them, but it's not mandatory. We need a quorum at these hearings. Usually, we're all there, that's been the history, but don't be afraid that if there's one hearing when you're way out of town or something happens, or a family matter, you know, the rest of us can carry forward your questions and wishes, and you can always go back. But anyway, any comments on this schedule?
So my, my only thing is, you know, last year, we had department heads here, like the library and stuff.
Yeah.
So maybe instead of having like, this day will be these departments, we read the budget, and then if we got questions, we say, can we request that these department heads come? Because I don't want to see folks have to come after hours for, to sit here, and we're not going to even have any questions for them.
Yeah.
That's it. That's a courtesy.
Yeah, we can give the Solicitor's Office and the Mayor's Office a list of our requests for which departments.
Right. And we can base it out. Stuff like that, they don't need to be sitting here, you know?
Right.
So unless we have questions for them, but so ahead of time, we'll say, can you ask them to be here?
And that's, and that's fair, and we would have to, to the extent that we know what department head we're going to be calling in, we'd have to post that on the supplemental agendas for that, so that we have the list on such, such a date, like, you know, we're going to have the school department in or the library or whatever. So we need to know, so we could work through that.
Isn't it possible, we may have done this last year, to list everybody?
We have, but that's.
And then we just invite certain ones, but at least we're covering the ad.
Whatever works, whatever you got to do, I just, they don't need to be had.
We have, I'm sorry.
Don't notify, we'll notify them. I think we even did that last year. We, we cut down on the amount. It was the first year.
We'll advertise every department.
Yeah.
Cover the advertising laws and procedures, but then we'll let you know with enough time to invite police, DPW, fire, whatever.
And is that legal if it's advertised, if we just say, we have no questions for that? Move on to the next one? Okay.
Better to advertise than not.
So if there are no questions.
I have one question, and this goes back to the ending process. I know in the past, yourself and former Assistant Solicitor Conley, there was some questions as far as the timeline for veto. Do we have, is that built in as well so that where if there's a case of a veto and there's an override meeting where we've built this into the consideration as well?
Yes, this, this builds in an override, that's why the date is 10/25. This, this is consistent with Assistant Solicitor Conley's prior budget timeline. I don't necessarily agree with it, but we're just, we had, we had enough, there's enough room in this, the way we laid it out, that we meet those deadlines, yes.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve this budget's calendar schedule?
Make a motion to approve?
Is it a vote?
Yeah, well, we can, we could.
No, I second, I second.
Okay, motion, Council, Councilman Regal, second, Councilman Lawson, all in favor of the schedule? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
We'll be in touch with you. So the first date for the hearing will be 9/18, right?
9/16.
Workshop, 9/18.
9/16 is when they present it.
Okay, the regular meeting, okay. You need this back?
Thank you.
Can you send that to everybody or make email? Oh, it's in the packet? Oh.
Yeah, it's somebody.
Oh, I missed it, sorry. Thank you. Next item.
Public hearings ordinance for second and final passes for discussion and possible vote. Number one, in ordinance and amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Summary subsection C of section 18-268. The purpose of this ordinance is to place a do not enter local traffic only sign on Amity Avenue. Sponsor, Councilman Fogarty.
Yes, move passage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, public hearing, and I'm sorry, the Councilman Fogarty made the motion, and Councilman Lawson seconded it. And is there anyone here that wants to comment on this? Anyone present would like to comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And now, what is your pleasure? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. And before you read the next item, I want to acknowledge the presence in our meeting of the School Committee Vice Chair, Mr. Tony DeCemis. Thank you for your attendance and working with the council. Next item.
Number two, in ordinance and amendment of chapter two of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Administration. Summary, adding section 2-298, allocations 50% of speed and red light camera revenues towards the East Providence School Department Capital Revolving Fund, introduced by Councilman Law.
So I'd like to call an audible here. Mike, how can, I'd like to reword this. I know we'll have to start from scratch. Instead of 50% of the speed and red light, I'd like to put 100% of the stop arm camera money that has not been baked into the budget yet. So I'd like to reword this ordinance that when that project goes into effect, the revenue that the city receives from people running past a stoplight around a bus goes into the school building fund.
So my suggestion would be, because if you change it now, it's going back to first passage anyway.
Correct.
So let me draft the new ordinance.
Absolutely.
With that language, and I'll.
Yep. So I'd like to pull this then.
You're going to just table this?
Correct. I'd like to table this.
Until the next meeting?
Nope, indefinitely.
Withdraw, you're going to withdraw this?
I'm going to end up withdrawing because we're going to change it from the red light camera money to the stop arm.
On table, definitely, okay.
So the item will be withdrawn. It's under public hearing, do we need to ask for comments or just? I mean, I think it's self-explanatory, items withdrawn, we'll redo it, come back. Yes, Councilman Fogarty?
So I, I'll do the short version. You don't want the seven-page long version. I did have one, maybe it's eight. I don't, you know, I don't pay much, but I do pay attention. As a parent, a grandparent, and former school maintenance worker, I care deeply about both our schools and our community. Before speed cameras, our police officers were stationed around schools writing tickets to speeders. These funds went into the general fund for the public safety, supporting police, fire, sidewalks lighting, and safer roads and more. That's why I believe these revenues should continue to be treated as public safety bill, not just a school safety bill. That doesn't mean schools should be left out. I support dedicating new revenues from on-bus stop-arm cameras or portable units near schools and parks to a school maintenance fund. And we can get those portable units as long as they're a mile and a quarter away, and we can have parks and definitely near schools. And I like them, because all these people cutting through back doors in St. Margaret's and Kent Heights and all these speeders behind these schools, they need to be ticketed too and save us kids. I have a whole nother statement for that, but let's keep to this. To a school maintenance fund where I left off. That creates balance. Schools benefit, but we don't weaken the resources that keep the entire city safe. At the end of the day, safety is for everyone. Families walking to schools, seniors crossing our streets, and neighbors using our parks, that's where these funds belong. That's my comment.
Thank you, Councilman. So a motion to table by Councilman Lawson, is there a second? Second, Councilman Fogarty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Tabled indefinitely. Next item.
Number three, in ordinance and amendment of chapter five of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Fire Prevention Summary, adding section 5-57, solicitation at fire scenes prohibited conduct, introduced by Council Vice President Regal.
Council Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is second passage. This came about because of a fire on Thatcher Street going back May, June of this year. I received calls, one was from Councilman Lawson, and one was from a couple of constituents saying something is going on up on Thatcher Street, a major fire. So I happened to be fortunate that day to be up in the East Providence area on business. And when I was coming, and unfortunately, it was a good friend of mine who I grew up with, his house was on fire, the family was devastated, beyond words, making sure animals got out. But the thing that really struck me was that the, the fire restoration people were just like bloodhounds, you know, walking up to these family members, handing out cards, cards in the way of the fire department, as well as the police, you know, department doing their work. And so this is second passage to ensure that, God forbid, any other residents of the city has to live through that ordeal, that they don't have to be dealing with these fire restoration people up there. It sets the boundary. So I move passage of this.
Second.
Matter is a public hearing? Any other comments from the council hearing? None? Anyone here tonight like to comment or have any questions? No one out of the 450 people that are here want to comment? No, seeing none, or close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item.
Number four, in ordinance adopting the 2025, 2035 East Providence Comprehensive Plan.
Make a motion to approve, and I apologize, Keith. We tried to get you guys up front, and I totally zoned on this, so I owe you a coffee.
Who coffees?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Well, he might have apologized, but Councilman Regal said, let him stay.
That's a bottle of wine.
Is there anyone here? I mean, we've had a lot of discussion on this, and it can always be changed through the year. Anyone here like to comment on this? Any more comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. We had the motion and second, did you get that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Keith, seriously, for all your work.
Just so the council knows, it doesn't become actually final until it's approved by the state planning office, correct, Keith? So we have, we're waiting for that.
So what's that, a couple of years?
I don't know. So until such time as it's approved by the state, we have to use the old comprehensive plan.
Okay. Good, good work, Keith. Thank you.
It's, it's usable to guide city decisions, but not state ones at this time?
Great. Thank you, sir.
And thank you.
To the council, thank you very much. It's, you know, years in the making here.
It's a long process. People don't understand the detail of it, but we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Next item.
New business, Mayor Communications, Chief of Staff Patricia Rizendi.
Thank you, Chief.
Again, good evening, council. Councilman Lawson, I'm going to, I'm not going to go through the details just yet. I just wanted to give you an answer to something you asked earlier about the compost toilets, Council President.
Yes, sure.
So we did receive a Rhode Island grant when we discussed the, and had the event for the swimmable beaches, once that becomes available. And through that grant, compost toilets were already part of that, so in that area. So I just wanted to remind you, because it's been a little while, because we've been working with the state on that grant. Well, we're still in process on making it a swimmable beach, but that is all part of that process. I can gather all that information and forward that to you. I just wanted to make you aware, that was part of the plan.
Right, but to make it swimmable, we need the bathroom.
Yes, and we talked about lifeguard, you need a lifeguard, too.
Support lifeguard.
They kind of go together. You can't have a lifeguard, or can't have a swimmable beach without the lifeguard.
You know, the beach.
You know, the beach disappears, right?
Right, I do. I'm aware.
So I've just got to warn the council, this is not on the agenda?
Yes, I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring that up.
I just, there has to be a discuss. It's, it disappears. Why are we wasting taxpayer dollars on lifeguards? I get the sentiment, but it doesn't match the reality. So, that's it.
Thank you, Senator Marcello and Mayor Communications. I only have one item on the agenda for this evening, and that is just to remind the council, I did send you all these documents. The city currently has an RFEOI, which is Seeking Expressions of Interest for Vendors. So basically with this, the City of East Providence, and Keith, Director Burns can tell you this as well, we've been working with NVA, the consultant, who has finally completed the feasibility study, and I did make that available to all of you. And the purpose was to see whether or not there were anyone out there willing to invest in what has been discussed during many community meetings, which is incubator space, satellite rec center, as well as housing. So we don't have any proposals on the table as of right now, but that RF, the RFEOI is currently out, and all of that is in your inbox if you would like to review that. And that is all from me this evening, unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
I do have a request on the finance reports. Can I get a read-only copy of it? I understand, I requested, and you said that you can't share it because you don't want us manipulating? Can I just get a read-only copy so I can aggregate data easily? I don't need the master sheet where I can change numbers. I just, what you provide to us, can I just, instead of a PDF?
I'm sorry, are you referring to the documents with the RFQ or the-
No, no, no. The financial reports that you guys give-
Oh, that's the councilman.
You guys provide us a PDF copy? I just request that it be a read-only. I don't want access to what your sheet does.
Right.
Just so it makes it easier for us to aggregate the data and do what we need.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's our only request. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Don't go fag, Linda.
Are you all set? It's good she- Yes, that was the only thing on Mayor Communications. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business items for announcement and discussion, June Finance and Capital Reports, Director of Finance, Glenda Degardo.
Well, again, we just discussed that. We, the request is that going forward, if we could, instead of a scanned PDF, we can get an actual spreadsheet. Thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate that. Well, we're gonna get the, let's see, I see. Okay.
Next item.
Thank you. Thank you.
Reports of other city officials request to approve residential handicap parking signed for thirty-four West Street, East Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine one four.
Was this CNN's? I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, Councilman Lawson seconded by Councilman Fogarty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item.
Resolutions for the-
Let it, let it see?
Into, no, wait, actually, introduction of ordinances for discussion and possible vote. Yeah. Councilman Lawson, did you have anything for the school committee?
I do. So, if you're paying attention to the budget process the schools are going through, they are gonna be requesting an increase. The bulk of that increase is just the salary obligations. Year over year, you get, if we want the best and brightest, we gotta offer competitive salaries, and you gotta have a yearly pay increase, you know? We talk about affordable housing. It's the wage stagnation that also hurts. So you can't not give people raises. So a bulk of their increase is that. There's other things. There's no fat. Whatever people think, they're doing a great job. They're struggling because people, I hope, understand that our budget year is not in sync with the state. So every other community on July one begins their fiscal year. Our school department starts their budget on November one. So school ends in June. There's still two months of that budget money they have to get through. So if they had to spend on subs and stuff, now it's two months, and the money for supplies and stuff like that. You know, hopefully, there's enough to get through the first couple of months. So there's so many challenges. Things are getting better. The craft program, that they're taking care of and stuff. So I just want you guys to be aware, I'm gonna fully support their number. I think we owe it to the students and teachers of the City of East Providence. The capital stuff will come through the capital building fund, so it won't be built into that budget. So basically, their budget can go towards the needed staff. People also gonna understand, too, that if you do a budget, in the middle of the year, things can change. If one special needs kid comes in and their IEP says they need a nurse, we have to fund that, and that could be a major hit to a budget. So, you know, and I'm only saying this so people understand more of process, because you hear a lot of criticism and stuff. Well, there's a reason why we have to go through these budgets and why the numbers are the way they are. I challenge anybody, there's no fat in these budgets. There's no pork. There's no pet projects getting funded. It's primarily salaries and benefits for the people that provide the services the City of East Providence needs. Public safety, public works, public education, fields and parks. So I just say this so we're aware that the school will come in saying, "We need an increase from what we got last year." And it's a valid. I've been following along. They shared the budget with me. I think they're doing a great job. They still unfortunately have to do some cuts and, you know, teaching assistance, speech, and occupational therapy for our special needs kids. These things, they cost money, and we are gonna take care of these kids. So that's my preamble. I commend the school department, Sandy, and the finance director. It's not easy. It is not easy, especially with schools. Enrollment's up. So everybody that keeps saying, "Oh, no enrollment's down" and stuff, that is not true. The high schools now at, I think, sixteen hundred ninety-eight, around there. Waddington, as we know, is bursting at the seams pretty much. Granted, once the preschool is built over at mine, that will alleviate it. But I just say this to really get the word out there so people understand. And public education, it's important. It's crucial. Not everybody can afford a private school. So we need to have a well-educated society. So that's my spiel, just to give you guys a heads up that they will be asking for an increase. I, from what I've seen, read, and heard, I'm gonna fully support that number that they bring, so.
And the community needs to support all of, all of this as well with, when you build a brand-new high school, which by most indications is the state-of-the-art school in Rhode Island, and then another bond issue passes you overwhelmingly, which essentially rebuilds Martin Middle School, and monies are also helping at Waddington and Riverside Middle School, others. None of that's free. So the public has to back up those votes of confidence to pass bond issues. Council, school committee, administrations in both departments, we're all at the same table.
And that's why I pushed for the school building fund and funding to go in it. You asked the townies to borrow three hundred million. We better damn well make sure that we have the resources to maintain eleven schools and stuff. So that's, that's the push. That's why I do that, you know?
Yeah, we have our work cut out for us. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Next item.
Introduction to of ordinances for discussion and possible vote. Number one, in ordinance increasing the annual salary of the city council pursuant to section two dash three of Article Two of the city charter. Annual salary of each city council member shall increase to nine thousand dollars, and the council president shall also be entitled to an additional payment of a thousand dollars above the salary as set forth in section one of this ordinance, effective January first, twenty twenty-seven, introduced by Councilman Fogarty.
You can have-
Councilman.
President, you can have-
Well, the next president, anyway.
You want the six-page version or the-
No, the Cliff Notes.
Second passage, I'll bring nothing but one comment. Uh, let's see. As a councilman elected in two thousand twenty-two, I receive a little over, what, thirty-five hundred a year for the time and work this role demands. That amount is far too low. Serving on council is not limited to two meetings a month. It means constant calls, emails, meetings with constituents, follow-ups on projects, and representing our city every day, which I do, and I know everybody sitting here does. On top of that, we cover our own costs, gas, wear and tear on vehicles, rising market prices, internet, phones, traffic. We all face the same traveling throughout the city, only to add to those demands. When you factor in the hours, this stipend does not amount to three dollars an hour. None of us do this for the money. I know that. But fairness matters. If the pay remains too low, we risk discouraging good people from stepping up to serve. That's why I propose, beginning in two thousand twenty-seven, not a raise to me now with this council, everybody that's talking, out of step. That's why I propose this for two thousand twenty-seven, that councillors receive nine thousand annually, which I should have, I actually wanted to put more, because you guys deserve it, and Anna, with the council president at ten thousand. This adjustment better reflects the responsibilities, time, and real cost of serving East Providence. So, that's my short statement. Thank you.
I agree with you, Frank. One thing I learned from one of my exes is you get what you pay for, and-
One, one of them?
People are going to-
Is that a song?
You know, public service is tough. You know, you get criticized left and right. You get people that don't even know you questioning your motives, questioning your character, your integrity and stuff. Who the hell would want to do that? So, we haven't raised the salary or stipend, whatever the term is, of an elected member God knows how long. Thirty-five hundred's been that way for a long time. So in this day and age, I think it's important that, you know, we encourage people that want to get into public service with the needs, you know? Like Councilman said, we put in a lot of, we're part-time. We don't have administrative assistant. You know, we got the city clerk, which is great. But like to aggregate data and stuff, what we're talking about, to keep track of bills going through general assembly, stuff like, a lot of that we're doing on our own. You know what I mean? And so I'm fully in support of it. And again, it starts next term. We're not voting ourselves a pay raise. Whoever gets elected for these seats for the twenty twenty-seven term, they will be the ones that will start receiving nine thousand. You know, it has to be raised at some point. So I'm glad you had the courage to bring it forward despite the criticism we're gonna get. And I a thousand percent support this. And I second it if you already- Yeah.
Motion and second, but still under discussion, council members.
I, uh, obviously, a lot of the words that was said here, I'm not gonna repeat, but for a historian's standpoint, it was high, and a budget commission came in and, you know, came in here and did what they had to do, and some of the things were obviously very good because it got the city back on its feet again. But this is one of the scenarios. It was funny. As a lot of you people know, I am Mayor Flaherty or Justice Flaherty is a good family friend of ours. And he was, he asked me one day, he goes, "What do you get up in East Providence now for being on the council?" I said, "Well," I said, "Thirty-five hundred." And he goes to me, "That's what I was making on the Warwick City Council in nineteen seventy-six before I became mayor." So, again, as my fellow councilpeople, you know, say, we we take it, but that's part of the job. It's it's like being the umpire and try to do the job where we don't go on it, but everybody's not gonna agree with every call and that's part of the process. It's the integrity part. When you call in or call in our families, you know, and get, and we get, and the gaslighting is the thing that goes up me sideways. But the thing, when our families are thrown into the mix of things and that, that is just absurd. I mean, to the point of, you know, when we had the situation with the murder last year, we had some know-it-all said, you know, Occupy City Hall. That was a great words and, you know, come protest in front of their houses. Come and protest in front of my house, because you're gonna have a nice surprise when you show up to my house most of the time. And I'll just leave it at that. But I also want to add, similar to what Councilman Fogarty's gonna add for the, for the, whoever is the person who sits in the mayor's office next time, is that I just want to add to the five councilpeople's budget. On, I want to add, section three, on an annual basis, the salary of the city council shall be adjusted January first by the total percentage increase of the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers published in the United States Department of Labor, of labor statistics for the Northeast region for the previous twelve months. Oh, you don't need that?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't agree with that part.
All right, so we're gonna take-
The mayor part, too. I don't agree with that.
So whatever, we're gonna take it out? All right.
You can amend that, right?
Okay, we can amend. I thought, were you gonna take it out of the mess, but?
Don't add it to the council part.
So, you know, discussion right now is just the council.
All right.
Okay.
I'm fine with it as is.
All right. I'm good.
Okay, and the only thing I'll add is that the key to remember is this is for subsequent city councils.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Not, not this one.
The new council sworn in.
Council President, I just wanted to-
Yes.
...that for the record. So I don't usually read Facebook, but I I have heard that some people have indicating that this is unethical conduct by the council because the fact that this will not take effect until a new council, an election happens. There's nothing that, the ethics laws prevents you from doing this. This is completely ethical. In fact, the law requires you to do this. So that's why it's coming effective on January first, twenty twenty-seven. There's nothing-
And anyone who has a problem, Ward for Council, at East Providence, I will be more than happy to meet and have a civil conversation and explain to folks why we believe this is important.
This is similar to what happens on the federal level with the Congress and Senate, as well as at the state level for setting the pays for the general offices.
I'm not so sure you want to compare yourself to-
Well, no, I'm just saying, but this is the, you know, I'm talking about the process.
Congress can vote itself or raise it for the current members, but this is, this is, this completely complies with the Rhode Island Ethics Code.
That's right.
Madam Clerk, did you get the motion and second on that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, four zero. Thank you, Councilman. Next item.
In ordinance, in ordinance establishing the annual salary of the mayor. The annual salary of the mayor shall be one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The mayor is entitled to all other ancillary benefits of employment enjoyed by department heads with annual cost of living adjustment, effective January first, twenty twenty-seven, introduced by Councilman Fogarty.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Chairman Rod. I'll do the one page instead of the three page. I promise.
Take your time.
You never hear me speak that much, right?
Right. Take your time.
Time for it. I wrote a few things down about this proposal. Over the past six and a half years, Mayor Bob DeSilva has demonstrated tireless commitment and effective leadership in guiding our city through challenging times. His efforts have been visible across every neighborhood, from Rufford to Riverside into Ralta Central City. He has met daily with residents, businesses, department heads, and community organizations, while overseeing investments in parks, infrastructure, schools, and public works, always striving to avoid tax increases. Mayor DeSilva has managed the demands of economic challenges, the Washington Bridge crisis, infrastructure disruptions, and rising cost of living. Despite these pressures, he has remained accessible, engaged, and dedicated to improving East Providence. His work has not gone unnoticed by our- His work has not gone unnoticed by our residents, given the scope of responsibility required of the office, the increasing demands of city management and the, and the severe rise in cost of living since the position's salary was last set. It is fair and necessary to adjust the pay for this role. This adjustment ensures that the city of East Providence continues to attract strong leadership and reflects the true value of the position. For these reasons, I believe the mayor's salary should be set at 120,000 beginning in 2027. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, so again, this is for subsequent, um, mayor in 2027. Effective, it does not apply, uh, to anyone in office right, right now. Um, I would add that, you know, in addition to what you, you stated as personal attributes, I think just the position itself for, we fifth, sixth largest city in, in the state. I, I, I think it's, it's much more appropriate than the 90,000 that was set up. That, you know, it was new. It was, there were reasons to do that at the time. But I think looking at comparable responsibilities statewide, this is certainly an appropriate action for the next person coming in.
Well, that was an original 90,000, six and a half years ago.
Yeah, six years, right.
And I will say, I was on the charter commission when we came to the 90,000. What we did was we took the average of what we call the urban ring Cranston, Warwick. We, Providence is the outlier being the capital, Unsockit, Patucket. And 90 was the average, was skewed it was Alan Fung in Cranston was making like 60 or 70. Very low, very low. So that skewed it. So I am totally in favor of in 2027, the next mayor, um, salary be 120,000 a year. Also remember, we also provide the mayor with a car, insurance, gas. So I think 120 is very, very favorable. I cannot support section two though, Frank.
Yeah.
Is there any appetite to remove that?
I'll amend that.
Okay. Can we remove section two from this?
We can. We can add like an annual evaluation?
Do that, that's.
I would like.
Do that anytime, yeah.
Right, so we can do that.
Well, you can't, obviously can't increase the salary of the mayor.
No.
Now or during the mayor's term. By the way, we're talking about the office of the mayor.
So when we talk about maybe possible charter things, one thing I'm going to suggest is every budget season, the city council evaluate the mayor's salary and award a raise as necessary. The reason I oppose this, to be very clear, we may have tight financial years and you, you can't have a, a built-in raise for the mayor, but then tell city workers, sorry, we can't give you a raise. So that's the reason why I believe we should strike.
So can you amend your second in the motion to reflect this striking that?
Amendment will now be to strike section two in its entirety.
Yes.
And so if that's the second, we'll, we'll vote on that amendment.
Yes.
I also have a technical amendment. If you look at, there's two section twos. Um, I just need, that's a typo. There should be section three. Section two should be section three. It's a typo from the law department. So.
And if January 2027.
Make, make, that, that should be section three, not section two. So, so you're striking the middle section two? Is that the motion?
Yeah, the part where.
Motion would be to strike middle section two, yes.
That's, that's.
And I second the motion to strike section two.
Now we're going to vote on that amendment, Council President, if there's any more discussion.
So the vote is on that amendment.
Uh, and what should be section three? Should it say January 1 or should it say, when do we get sworn in? Like the, well.
I thought it would just January would cover it, Mike.
I believe that's the date. I believe that's the date that we usually sworn in, January 1st, 2020.
Okay. So as long as we're good with that. So yes, I second the motion to strike section two.
All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, we need.
Now we need the motion.
Vote on this, uh, ordinance as amended.
So the, is there a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
I'll make a motion to.
Councilman Fogarty moves it. Councilman Lawson seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it four zero.
First passage.
For first passage.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item. I, I think that we already did the other part of the, yes, it is. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, make that motion.
Councilman Lawson seconded by Council Vice President Regal. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Um, Council President, September 6th at East Providence High School, The Platters.
The Platters, I have my ticket. I will, uh.
Yeah, buddy.
I, I was there a couple of years ago. The show is absolutely fantastic.
Nice. There you go. Are we off? I'm sorry, I keep talking.